Seven ten. I would ask the administrator if she will please take the role.
Trustee, Cawthon.
Here.
President Klein.
Here.
Stanford.
Here.
O'Brien Bergman.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
Zappa.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I would ask the board to review the minutes from the board meeting of May 5th. Point out any errors that you have found. And then I would ask someone to make a motion to approve the minutes. Anybody find any errors? Colleen?
I want to approve the minutes from May 5th, 2009.
Thank you, Colleen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor of approving the meeting minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
By the same sign. Thank you. I'm going to get out from behind this table so that we can recognize our former president of the board, Larry Larson.
Larry? Does he can make a speech?
On behalf of the Board of Trustees and the whole Village of North Hudson, I'd like to personally thank you for your six years of dedicated service as the president of the board. You have made my job and the job of the board much easier by the precedence that you have set. Your professionalism and just the way you conducted the meetings, as well as yourself. And on behalf of the community, I'd like to present you with this plaque. If you take the lid off, I think you'll find something here that should be compatible with the gift that was given to you by the staff.
Yes, very much so.
Would you like to read it and say a few words?
"Village of North Hudson, Certificate of Appreciation is hereby granted to Larry Larson. For six years of service to his community as president of the Board of Trustees dated May 5, 2009." And engraved here, and I'm surprised, Mark, you were actually able to engrave your own name here.
Yeah, I did. It's been a while, too, Larry.
Did that well?
Okay.[161.12][161.12](laughter)
Signed by all of the board members. So, I thank you very much. I can assure you that it was both an honor and a privilege to work with such an outstanding board. Daryl, I was terribly glad to see you step forward and volunteer. Mike is here from the plant commission. I want to thank you for your years of service and continuing, and as well as all the staff, again. It was an easy six years because of the people that you work with and the staff that the village has. Everybody should be very proud of it. And I thank you again very much.
Look at that, a standing ovation. How about that?[211.18][211.18](laughter)
I had a cramp.[213.18][213.18](laughter)
Thank you again. I'll let you get back to business.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.[220.18][220.18](laughter)
At this portion of the meeting, we ask if there are any comments from the floor on anything that is not on the agenda.
I'm ready.
All right. Thank you, sir. Would you please state your name and address?
Fred Buckey, 5426 Sixth Street, North Hudson, Erie.
I can.
Now, I want to help the village out in a little way. They tore down this garage here and they had no place to go, so they rented the building. Well, I got some land behind my house that's the interesting stuff in the village that they put a garage down. I don't want nothing else on there. So, that's all I have to say. If you're interested, let me know.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
We'll leave that to the plant commission.
We saw him last month.
Okay. And I know you're going to comment on it later. Thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
Scott Jarrett, 306 Sixth Street. And I'm concerned about the enforcement of noise, unnecessary noise prohibitions. There are state, actually, there's, OSHA has laws, EPA, the state and municipalities all have laws regarding noise. And I'm mostly talking about motorcycle noise. And I should preface this with saying that I, myself, am an avid motorcyclist, so I'm not anti-motorcycle in any way. But the illegal pipes that motorcyclists use that are rarely ticketed and rarely cited, they are clearly illegal according to EPA, according to state. And your municipal section 70-6 says, "No person shall, within the village, own public or private property, by or through the use of a motor vehicle, motorcycle, snowmobile, or minibike, under circumstances which tend to cause or provoke a disturbance, or annoy any one or more persons, engagement violent, abusive, unreasonably loud, or otherwise disorderly conduct, including but not limited to unnecessary or deliberate or intentional spinning of wheels, squealing of tires, revving of the engine, blowing the horn, causing the engine to backfire, etc. Such conduct is declared to be both unlawful and a nuisance. The penalty for violation of this section shall be a penalty as provided in section 111." And 111 describes fines of a minimum of $5 for the first offense, between $500, I think it is, and the second offense is, I believe, between $10 and $500. Aside from the fact that this equipment is illegal for street use, and it's been accepted on the streets in most places, more and more townships and communities are deciding to actually enforce the laws. And I would expect that there would be some enforcement here. We don't have any. If there's not going to be enforcement, there are other suggestions that I could make. One would be, because here's another thing I want to point out. I kind of want to, part of this is my feeling that North Hudson is getting a bit of a bad rap because the two parades that the motorcycle riders come to in North Hudson have the North Hudson police disrupting the flow of normal traffic to encourage and allow and help to enable the motorcycle riders into a bar with illegal equipment that's making too much noise, according to your own laws. And then they're escorting them back onto the highway at the expense of the normal flow of traffic. If that's going to continue to happen, take the law off the books, is my suggestion. If you take the law off the books, then the next thing would be, please provide all the people along that route with free hearing protection. And also, if you're going to need a station of policemen at the intersection, why not let the motorcyclists use the traffic light? That traffic light could be re-timed so that the motorcyclists could have more time getting on the highway, because there certainly are more of them, and I don't want, I'm not trying to disparage them or the police force or anyone. But use the traffic light and have them ride down Fourth or Fifth Street instead of Sixth, and close off the entrance of Wisconsin there. Now, I also assume that we don't allow trucks to use jake brakes in the city limits, and the reason is because of the noise. And I'm sure those laws would be enforced. So, I stand here encouraging you all to look at, just to look at what you want to do about that. You have a law, it's not being enforced. If you don't like the law, get rid of it. But you're going to have to go beyond the municipal level because there's a state law and there's a federal law as well. I'm trying to gather support or even just comments, because I'm not closed-minded about this. So, I started a blog, and if anybody would be interested in visiting the blog and making a comment, or if you feel that you support this idea, or you don't support the idea and just want to lash out at me, that would be fine. But the blog is northhudsonnoise.blogspot.com. And I really would appreciate it if we either are a community of laws, or we at least don't pretend to be. And also, I think the big thing here is that we have to realize that noise is a pollutant. It's been established as a pollutant. It's damaging to hearing. There's a lot of other physical damages to a human being that are very well documented. If I was pouring toxic substances into the water supply, I'm sure you would stop me. And even if I was 3,000 feet deep pouring small amounts of toxic substances into the water supply, you'd be stopping me. But nobody is stopping the noise pollution, even though the laws exist. So, I would just like to have that become an active theme that is seriously considered by you. And I'd like an opportunity to discuss it further.
Scott, could you just restate your address, please?
306 Sixth Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next on the agenda, I've asked Jim O'Connor, who's our representative on the library board, if you'd like to talk briefly about the library. Jim, floor is yours.
Thank you. George asked that I review the recent library use survey, which I received a copy of. So, I'd like to start with that. And this is a survey that we handed out at the library in April. Actually, there were a few more came in after this tally was done, so it was close to 400 people responded to this survey. And it's not surprising, most of them were active library users. I wanted to just hit some highlights with you, and we had a discussion that you find, Most respondents liked location, satisfied with hours, whatever. Active users, the majority of people checked out three days away.
Did you turn it off? I think it's in.
They worked in the collection, or they were already checked out for somebody else, or they had to go to the more directory in which we can bring in items from other regional libraries. That reflects their collection. And about 40% of the respondents said that they used the computers at the library. In the area of what services would like to see added, basically, they said more of everything. More books, more DVDs, more space, more computers, and more programs. Particularly interesting area was the question, how did the library save them? And there are large number of responses there. People agreed that the resources available at the library did indeed save them significant amounts, not having to buy their own books, some of the video collections, especially the children's items are very popular. Also, the internet access, for those who have it elsewhere. So, it was widely agreed that the library is a real money saver for the public. Also, an interesting area was the list of things in self-help area. People had a wide variety of responses of what to use the library for, how it helped them in their personal lives, in their studies, those who were students, homeschoolers used it extensively, and also business people made use of it. In the area of what do they like most about the library, a lot of them responded, just having the library was very valuable to them. They also generally found the staff to be helpful, and they were especially favorable on the children's programs. And corresponding area of what do they like least, it breaks down the three major areas, the wide dissatisfaction with the facility, the building is way undersized, and most found it not very inviting. It's why they recognize that the collection is very small for a community of our size. And our services are limited partly by space, partly by limited collection, and partly by a small staff. So, those were the highlights of the survey. I'll copy it, and we'll be discussing points that we'd like to bring up.
Jim, the cover sheet for the material that you provided to us is actually the state of the library, and I'm going to give you an opportunity to discuss that page.
I'll begin to do so, but I, since we're discussing the survey, I will move on to the state of the library.
Do you have a best of one of surveys given outside the library? Have you ever done a community survey?
This will handle at the library.
Okay. Has there been a community survey?
There have been various forms. There have been outreach services in a few different things. And, which had similar responses to what the feelings were. Also, when the city of Hudson did their city survey for their comprehensive plan, it was three years ago, there was a question on the city survey about what public facility in Hudson is most in need of improvement. And far and away, library was recognized as most in need of improvement, far ahead of streets, parks, police, whatever, which all thought to be in better shape than the Okay, moving on to the state of the library, a couple of things I'd like to highlight there is I think it does explain, gives some background and shows where we're at. First is the very substantial increase in circulation. From 2000 to 2008, it's increased 160% from 124,000 to 324,000 items. That is a huge increase over just eight years. And it is increasing at a compound rate of 12-plus percent a year. And at 12-plus percent a year, Daryl knows it will double in seven years. Six years, actually, wanted Daryl. Divided by 72, and you've got, so it is on track to double in six years. That is, it shows the substantial support in the whole area for library usage and the value that people attach to the library. Interestingly, circulation is now 1,100 volumes a day if the library is open, six days a week. So, that's a lot of checking out and returning. There's just a huge processing volume there that needs to be done. It's always been run very efficiently. A standard measure of library efficiency is the cost per circulation. You see, the Wisconsin average is $3.61. Here in Hudson, we're doing for $2.10. And part of that is a matter of necessity because we have very limited tax support, quite frankly. You can see a comparison with the Wisconsin averages there. Average Wisconsin support for libraries, $38 per capita. Here it's $23, with a correspondingly lower assessment ratio. And that is recapped further on the reverse side. And rapidly increasing volume with very limited financial support leads to an inadequate facility and very limited services. We know this exists. We'd like to find a way to rectify it, and we want people to understand where we're at here. We keep talking about the facility, and the first one there is that we only have one-third the space of the average Wisconsin library for our size population. And all the way down the line, the computers, for the staff, the volumes, is all way below state averages. That's kind of ironic in that Hudson's always reported as being one of the highest income, best educated parts of the state, but it hasn't carried over to the library. I'd be glad to try to respond to any questions or comments you might have on it.
Question I have, just can you tell me, you know, cost per circulation? Circulation is just books? Is that right?
It is. It is all items at the library.
It's all items, even news?
Newspapers don't circulate. Magazines, books are the primary item.
Okay.
A few magazines. There is the DVD and audio collection.
Okay.
And also renewals are in there. That's the standard measure of circulation.
Okay. So, how do you calculate the cost per circulation exactly? What is that?
That's the total library expenses for the year.
Divided by the number?
Divided by the number of items, yes. Yes, Mark?
I don't mean this with any disrespect, but why are we listening to this tonight? Is there a, usually, we hear about the library at budget time.
In your board packet, last month, there was a, I think the survey was provided last month, and I asked Jim if he would be available to present and also talk about the student library. That's all just?
Just better information.
Jim is our library representative, and I'm trying, over the course of a year, to have representatives from each of the agencies that we have just come in and give a presentation. As far as why now, why not? That doesn't, he means he's looking for money, but, yeah. If he was looking for money, he would be back around budget time.
I expect there probably will be.
Well, thank you very much, Jim. Does anybody in the audience have any questions of Jim? Anybody else from the board?
Just one comment, Jim, on the collection itself, because I think that's just a little bit of a misnomer. My wife and I are very active library users, and it's kind of neat that the library keeps track of what you check out. I think last year, we checked out over 300 items. We're both pretty active readers. I'm a little confused when there's an indication that it's not much of a collection and there aren't books that I want to check out. Frequently, the items that we check out come through the Morfour system, and they come from some library in the area. But we wind up with the material, and I must admit, it really is of little concern to me if it comes from Eau Claire, or Boyceville, or some other place, as long as I get the material. So, when we're part of the Morfour system, why is it a concern that in this location we have a big or a small collection? I'm just, I don't quite understand why that's a negative.
Couple of things, but thanks for the question. The MOR, M-O-R-E, system enables the library patrons in this part of the state, about, covers about 12, 13 counties up here, to go online and look up books throughout the libraries, see what each library has, and order from another library if need be. It's then brought in by curio, and you pick it up here, and of course, we send items out, too. By not having a bigger collection on hand here, it means that you have to wait for it. It's not available on the shelf to take it and go, so you have to wait to bring it in. And because of the extra handling involved in that, it's a very labor-intensive process for the staff. And so, that's more of an internal issue, but it does take additional staff time or additional handling involved in this type of borrowing. It's a great asset for all the people to be able to tap into other libraries, but it comes at a cost. Okay, thank you for your interest.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Next item on the agenda is a temporary event, flea market license application. I see Mary. Would you like to take the podium in case there are any questions? Mary would like to have a flea market back behind, back behind the car wash, like you said. Isn't, this is, you've got quite a map here, so if you want to take a look between the car wash and the laundromat, there is, the chief has done some background investigation. There is a doc, there is a document here called, oh, the title is flea market application, additional information, with a couple of maps and a layout. So, Mary's here to answer your questions before we enter into a motion to either allow or deny her flea market. I recognize the neighborhood. Very good. Anybody have any questions, Mary? Mary, you want to talk about what you got you started on a flea market?
I just thought in this economy, it would be a good idea, also to help out people in the community that don't have a place to sell items that they might want to sell. It'd be more cost-effective to do it through a structured flea market type than putting out an ad in the paper and putting out signs, and it'd be a little better for everybody in the community to have it as like a community garage sale or flea market. Planned on doing this a couple Saturdays a month during the summer.
And do I understand properly what separates this from a garage sale, or differentiates it, excuse me, from a garage sale, is that there'll actually be tax on the items?
There will be, there will be, we will solicit vendors, and I will, per Wisconsin statutes, take all the information down and submit that to Department of Revenue after each event. And they're responsible to pay the sales tax. I'm just responsible to collect the information. So, it'd be a combination of vendors and what are called occasional salespeople that can be exempt from the sales tax, like people that do garage sales.
So, if I wanted to, would I rent a booth?
You would rent a space.
A space? Okay.
Yep. Deliniate spaces, they're either 11 by 34 or 11 by 25, and that space includes the vehicle. So, there's the sales space and the vehicle that would eliminate any parking issues for vendors versus buyers.
What about buyer parking? Is there?
There's space between the, well, assuming I fill up all the spots in that lot. There would be space north of the laundromat, and, well, between the laundromat and the car wash.
Okay.
And there's also space along the drive back behind those buildings in North End Bowl.
Have you discussed this with any of the owners of those businesses?
No, not all of them.
I know, I don't know how busy Saturdays are. My guess is they are busy, but, you know, I don't have, myself, I personally don't have a problem with that. I, I.
These are daytime hours between eight and three.
Yes, I understand, yeah. But I'm just wondering, you know, if that impacts the parking space or the parking, you know, the customers that would go into these other buildings, if now they're going to have a problem. It seemed to me, you know, we would like to get some input from those people that have businesses there, just to see if they would be in support, or?
I could probably address that since, aside of the liquor store, we owned, and Tom Thumb, we own the other businesses that are adjacent to that and the property. And given that time of day, there's not that much activity. I don't see it being a problem impacting, wouldn't impact any of our businesses. I don't think the liquor.
Negatively, it might even be positive, I guess. I don't.
I'm guessing positive, but.
Yeah.
No, there isn't, I guess the reason Mary hasn't spoken to many of them is because she's spoken to me, and that kind of covers that whole base.
Okay.
It's true.
Just maybe, a little thumbnail snapshot of your business plan. I applaud entrepreneurship, and I'm assuming that you're not doing this totally out of the goodness of your heart. Air Quality Services LLC is hoping to make a profit running a flea market.
That's not me.
Oh, that's a different agenda.
Who's the applicant here? Okay, so you would be doing business as a sole provider?
Yes, to me, yep.
You would still hope to make a profit at it?
I would hope to pay costs. I would hope to pay costs.
So, a vendor coming in would rent space from you at?
$20 to $25 a space. Twenty to $25 a space. I need to pay for the lease of the property. I need to pay for port-a-potty facilities. If we get some people, I need a place for them to go. I can't rely on the local businesses to provide that service. It's not so much as a profit center for me right now. I just want to see if it's viable, if it will help, and if the community likes it.
Are there any insurance issues?
Well, I'm not criticizing your desire to earn a profit. I said I applaud entrepreneurship. I'm just trying to see what this business looks like.
It'd be nice to make a few dollars for my time, but that's it.
Any insurance issues with this?
Insurance...
Liability issues?
Generally, the way flea markets are run is the vendors are liable for their own insurance, collecting their own sales tax. This is the way flea markets are set up in Wisconsin and around the country.
Okay.
I'm just providing a location. I have a vendor contract that needs to be signed. It lays out specified rules.
Okay.
And it's pretty standard from what I've been able to find.
Does it cover liability in terms of responsibility for liability?
Yes. It says that is the vendor's responsibility to cover their own liability costs.
Okay.
And have their own liability insurance.
Yes.
I don't think there's any liability issues with respect to the village.
Yeah.
If that's part of the question was...
I would like to just comment that the application does come from the Department of Ag, and there's a $165 filing fee, which Mary has already taken care of. But the license also is a two-year license. I didn't realize there wasn't anything that commented on that.
I was just looking for that. I wondered if this lasted just this summer season, but...
I believe the time period is from May 1 in an odd year through April 30 of the next odd year.
There's a statute on that, George, and it does require two years.
Well, I'm going to recommend approval, and we can argue.
Any further discussion?
You had indicated that the vendors' cars would have to be parked...
Inside the space.
You know, just doing the math on that, it makes it extremely tight, because an average car is going to be about seven feet by 18 feet. And if the spot is 11 by 25, it allows you four feet by not a lot, if you thought that through thoroughly.
Right. Usually spaces, I've checked it out, and you can have larger spaces. A lot of parking lot spaces are only nine by 18. So this is larger, wider, and longer than a regular parking space.
The ones that I've visited, people are working out the back of their van.
Yeah, right, right, just on the back door.
Because they don't want to pack a lot of stuff in and set up.
Move it too far.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my only concern that I would have is just, you know, the feelings of other business owners, you know, a cozy corner, a gas station, what have you. I don't see it as being a negative thing at all, but it'd just sure be nice that they're informed of what's going on. If there would become an issue after the approval.
Actually, I did talk to Kim at the Liquor Store, and she's in favor of the flea market. So Cozy Corner and Freedom would be the only two that I haven't talked to.
You know, as Mark was alluding to, I think it could be a really good positive. It brings people into the community.
Absolutely.
That area, which is our only commercial area. I think it would be something to be worthwhile for the people to try.
And I suppose this doesn't interfere with the car wash in any way at all. It'd still be free access to that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, you know, Mary and I talked about it, and it's not a... While I don't think it's a concern of the board whether or not she makes money or not at it, it's a private concern. I will say that it's... I've questioned how much of a labor of love is this? Or are you going to want to do this very long for what little return there may be? And it's... She's doing it for the interest of it, of trying to get a little activity and the whole concept of recycling and moving some things around in this day and age. And it does bring people to North Hudson, and it's going to be on a limited time, eight to three. And I can pretty much assure you, all those businesses up there on either side of the street would welcome additional people to North Hudson. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but it's not exactly robust out there.
I think it's worth giving it a try for two years.
Yeah. How much space is there between the back of one of these booths and the property line?
Butting that... The way that would work is that you... There wouldn't be any, because the way I have it designed is that you would pull the vehicle straight in. So the front of the vehicle would be abutting the property line between the lot and the apartment building. And the sale would occur off the back end of that, which would be facing away. So I would say 18 feet minimum.
I would just caution you so that you don't get the ire of the neighbors on there to be very careful... To carefully mark how far that car can go.
Oh, absolutely.
And make sure that they don't exceed that. Otherwise, you will have problems.
There are trees, as you could see in that photo, in almost the whole section back there, except for one.
Any other questions from the board?
It seems pretty well thought out and organized, so I think it would be worth a try.
We wish you luck, Mary.
Thanks.
All...
It seems pretty straightforward. It's a two-year license, though, so I wonder if there's any sort of disruption or a problem that comes up that we don't see right now? What is our ability to... Maybe ask a question for the chief, ability to take action?
Personally, I would hope if there's a problem, that that person would come to me first, and we could figure it out between ourselves before bringing it to the board or to the chief.
I believe the village has the right, the board has the right, to rescind any license or permit the time issue. I think there's something in the code books.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Oh, we didn't approve it yet, Mary. All in favor of the motion as stated? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 By saying aye.
Aye, I abstain.
Got that, Becky? Okay, thank you very much, Mary. We wish you all the best of luck.
When's your first one? This is free advertisement here.
I was going to try to make it the 13th, but I don't have any vendors yet. I didn't want to do that without getting approval.
Okay.
So probably two weeks after that.
Sometime in June, though.
Last week of June or second of last week.
How will you advertise our...
Maybe you want to get back up there so that the audience... No, okay.
How will you advertise?
A different variety of ways. I'll be making a flyer that I put up in businesses around town and maybe get a story done in the Hudson paper or do a press release in the Socko Hudson paper, advertising Christ List or flea market things you'd like to do.
Okay.
We'll stop by.
I'll be there.
Mark might put it on the sign out in front of Muzzin's sign.
Item number seven, a peddler's permit application. Chris, if... Christian, if you want to take the podium there? This gentleman represents Air Quality Service LLC, which is a... Well, I'll let you describe your business.
Hi, my name's Christian Oros, and I'm the owner of Air Quality Service. I started this business after seeing a need for a quality furnace and air duct cleaning company after doing research and working in the field for a while. We just felt that we can improve on what other people were giving us as a service. We went out and bought the best equipment that we could for cleaning air ducts. It's designed for cleaning air ducts. And we're just start... Just starting off. Spent a lot of money on advertising and Money Mailer and stuff, and we got very little response. And we're just going door to door. Worked out pretty good. You know, just knocking on doors, offering our service through a flyer that we have and a coupon. And that seemed, you know, customers being able to meet face to face with us, and we can explain the equipment and everything else, just seemed to drum up business a little better. We do want to follow the rules, and we want to do things right, and that's why we're filing for a peddler's permit. We want to go with what the town requires, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Board have any questions regarding a peddler?
What have we done in times past with peddler's licenses? What's that?
Yeah, you know, honestly, I don't like going door to door personally. I don't, you know, but...
If I was joking, I don't care.
If I could do it through advertising, I'd rather do it through advertising. But like I said, the experiences that we have had going door to door, it's been good, you know, like meeting face to face with the customer and getting to explain our service rather than someone else's just seems to be helpful for my business. And we don't plan to be in here in... I live in Hudson, the town of Hudson down the road. We don't plan to be here all the time. On our downtime, when I don't have jobs scheduled through advertising, then we go out and we try to drum up some business for ourselves, you know, try to keep things going.
I'd like to answer Joe's question. We have, over the years, had peddlers apply to the board, ask for permission to peddle their wares. And one of the stipulations is to state the hours that you would plan on peddling. And so your application, is there even a... I know there's a recommendation for it, but I don't...
It's in the process of being revamped.
Okay, yeah, we need to include the hours that you would plan to peddle to make sure that they would fit in with... We wouldn't want you peddling and knocking on people's doors at nine o'clock at night.
Absolutely not.
And I know you wouldn't, but we just want to be able to have it in the stipulation what your hours would be. So I would ask you at this time, what hours and/or days of the week would you plan on?
We would plan on probably Tuesday through Saturday from eight... Nine o'clock in the morning until maybe three in the afternoon, four in the afternoon. We don't believe in disturbing anybody eating dinner and spending time with their families, so.
Okay.
It's not really an issue, but you've got a Hudson address, but a Minnesota phone number.
Yeah, and after talking to some people, I probably will get that changed or added on to my business. I'm fairly new to Wisconsin, so, yeah, and I see, you know... I like the fact that people want to deal locally and do work with business locally, so I will look into getting a 715 phone number.
Is that your cell phone?
Yes, sir.
Just two other items that I'd like to bring to your attention. In the... We'll also put in the final... It goes beyond the application, but in your... In the document, we would recommend that you carry it with you so that when you knock on a door and somebody answers and says, "Do you have a permit to do this?", the answer is, "Yes, I do", and you have it in your hand. If you don't, I think you'll get a call, Mark?
Absolutely. I already went out and got a necklace, and we're going to hang it right on there, so.
And the other item is that we'll have it in the stipulation about following all state, federal, and local laws.
Absolutely.
So.
I just make a general comment, but, you know, I don't know if it'd be beneficial or not, but do you have flyers that you stick in newspaper slots or maybe on the, you know, the doors or something if people aren't home?
Yes, absolutely. And here's an example of one of the flyers. Basically, it has a list of our services, and it's got a coupon price there. And if they don't answer the door, we just put it in there on their door handle like that.
I just... I don't know if it'd be a good idea, but it might be beneficial to have something that, you know, you're licensed to do that kind of stuff in North Hudson or wherever. You know, you do have approval from the local governments to be soliciting.
Is the back of it blank?
Yeah, this is just kind of a rough copy. Obviously, we have a low overhead.
And that's just something I'm thinking of. I don't know whether that makes sense or not. It's just... My personal opinion of this is... I... This is me talking. I'm not wild about people knocking on my door and selling me things.
Sure.
I just don't like it. And I know there are other people in the village that feel the same way. So I have a tough time personally with these guys. I'm not against business. I'm not against you trying to go out and sell your service, because I think it is a good service. I think that sort of thing, my wife and I were even thinking about that lately for families' houses. But I'm just not wild about door to door, people coming and knocking on the door.
You know, we're not either, and I don't believe in the hard sell, and I don't believe in harassing people. Basically...
You know, people can be intimidated, is the thing. And people that go door to door can get very good at subtly intimidating people after, you know, a few tries at it, or, you know, a week or so. And that's all I'm saying. I'm just throwing caution to the wind. That's what I think personally.
I'll take that. Just go ahead, Mark.
I understand where you're at with this, and to... I think where we're at right now, unless we abolish all peddlers, you know, it's a hard thing to judge this on each time. It's pretty much, you know, they go by the rules and all that. You have to approve it, and it's subject to, you know, we get a complaint or if the village hall gets one phone call, then probably that would be the end of that. And you know what I mean? All it takes is one aggravated person, and it'll probably change things a little bit. And while I agree with Joe in essence, and I understand where you're at, and I'm in business myself, it's just answering the door to sales calls is nobody's dream, you know? But I think as a board, we do have a peddler's license available, so we're somewhat obligated to be responsible to an applicant. Saying down the road, if this... Rather than debate this each time and express our feelings on how we feel about this, it might be in the interest to look at it as whether you keep it on the books or not.
How many peddler's licenses do we have on the books, too?
Very few.
Yeah, there aren't that many.
Very few. You may recall, we had a peddler... It was a peddler's license for the ice cream man, wasn't it?
Last summer. No, there aren't. I think there's not enough to really be bothered.
I'll just... I understand where you're coming from, Joe, but I'll tell you what. I find it less obtrusive to have somebody come knock on my door and say, "I have a service. Here's my flyer. If you're interested, give me a call." I appreciate that a whole lot more than a telemarketer. That when I hear that phone ringing and there I am, and I go running over to get the phone because I think it's going to be my wife, no, it's somebody trying to sell me something.
It's also easy to hang up on them, though. It's tougher to shut the door on somebody when you...
I think Mark brought up a very good point. I want to say, you know, you came in here very organized and of everybody I've ever seen apply that no matter what decision the board chooses to make, it's a good application. The three questions I have, would you be the only one doing this?
Yes, I would absolutely be the only one approaching the doors, and then I have guys who work for me, yes.
And then the other part that would be interesting is somebody brought up, I don't know if it was Joe or you, George, but if nobody does respond, I think, and this is something, like you said, Mark, we need to abolish this ability to get a license or put some strict stipulations. But I was here on such and such a date at such and such a time. It's my goal to offer you a service that I feel that we can do a better job at than anybody else. Please allow me the opportunity to talk to you, something like that, in a way that doesn't make you feel like somebody has, you know, been at your residence, whether or not they're... And, you know, I guess the third question, it's not going to be a Saturday thing? Does Monday through Friday or Saturday?
It's said Monday, Tuesday through Saturday.
Saturdays are actually a good day, because people are home doing home improvements and... You know, being new to Hudson and having a new business in Hudson, we are really trying... really trying to, I'm trying to get more involved with the community and meet more people. I mean, we're not a fly by night company, you know? I haven't, we have, when we live here, we have a home here that we own. And, you know, really trying to build up a reputation here as a, as a good, you know, service. So, and that's how I want to portray myself at people's homes as well.
You're making it hard to say no, you know that, don't you?
To my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints about people peddling in the community.
The chief? Oh, he just left.
I think it did probably, the administrator might would probably get the call as well. I think, I think the administrator's answer could suffice instead of the chief's. There, there haven't been that many applicants and I really don't like every time we do this, we go through this, either it's yes or no, based on the merits of what this man is presenting and we move on. We don't need to give him advice on how to market in other ways and all that stuff. While I, you know, it's good to voice our opinions, it's either, either we don't allow peddling or we do, and what few applicants we do and he meets all the qualifications, it should be a yes and we go on our way.
I think it's also worthwhile bringing up the sensitivity to some people that they're not necessarily used to having people come to their door.
I, Joe, I'm not disagreeing with that, but it's, we can't, until we make a yes or no, you know, to debate this all the time gets to be redundant.
You know, but my, my point is, is the applicant should know that, that some people are pretty skeptical of that, so they need to be, be careful.
Well, yes, I'm not endorsing and all your qualifications aside, we hear that from everybody, so don't take this offense. Everybody's a great guy when they're applying for something. But like I said, just as a friendly reminder, one complaint and we have to respond. And so I trust you'll do a fine job, but you know as well as I do, you don't like answering the door for sales calls either, so you know kind of the deal.
And let me just tell you, we, we are not here to scour this neighborhood every day, you know? When we're slow on business, you know, that would be the only thing.
I just want to clarify though, that this application is for you only. Your staff cannot solicit. If they, if you want to include them, then there's, they have to have, go back to their background check and do it individually.
If my staff could sell, we'd be in better shape.
I move approval.
Thank you, Joe. Second is by whom?
Daryl.
Daryl, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you, Christian. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
To approve the peddler's license.
With those contingencies.
All right, we've got quite a list of licenses, amusement permits and so on, and they are all, as I understand it, Gloria, the details are all attached in this stapled group here. And Gloria has done for us is to put them together in a very succinct manner. Is that correct, Gloria? So each one of those applications, they're all boiled down and grouped so that you could, someone, I would enter, I would ask someone to entertain a motion for the first one, then the second one, the third one, the fourth one, the fifth one, and they're grouped. Somebody want to start reading?
So they would be individual? This is not a request for a blanket approval?
That is correct. So you will, the first one will be a motion to approve. That'll be the alcohol beverage license renewal.
It appears that all of these have been properly vetted and meet the requirements and the, I mean, when I looked through this material, it looked like all of that background has been done.
Yes, it has.
And I didn't see any holes in it.
And what this is, is every year, is that right, Mark? Every year we do this. The review and so on between you and Gloria?
Businesses themselves?
The businesses?
Gloria does.
Gloria does also. But this is a renewal. We do it every year at this time.
The only one that we need to address is the Hudson Suds fence issue that didn't get addressed at the last meeting. That, that quantification needs to be included in his approval.
This might speed things up a little bit, but there's also a right to a renewal once, unless somebody's done something wrong and there's a list of specific things they would have had to do wrong in order to not get their renewal. So once, once somebody's established a liquor license and they've proven they can be a good operator with that liquor license, it's, it's not, it's not really a completely discretionary thing just to take it away because you don't like the guy or something like that. So renewal is somewhat automatic unless, unless they've been, there's been a problem on the liquor licenses.
So these, what you have in front of you too is, this is just a formality?
I wouldn't say it's a formality. It's a requirement of the statute.
A required formality.
If, it's an opportunity to review, to see if any of these businesses have caused any problems. But if they haven't caused any problems, I mean, I don't want to just say it's a formality, but those are your words.
That'd be up to our staff to advise us.
And it was the staff who put this together.
Sure.
Well, the only thing that I wouldn't know is if there were problems as far as law enforcement, I wouldn't have access to that information. So, and I, I believe, chief, which part of these, you look at the agent?
I haven't seen any of this. So I would, if it, if it's related to the business, I would, I haven't requested to look up any details on it. I don't want to speak without looking at details, but we don't have problems with our local bars at this point.
Thank you.
Well, in an effort to get through this, then, would it be advisable then to just use a trade name, line C1 and a trade address and then move that we just start getting through these and make motions to approve them?
Well, there's...
You've got your cover page.
Too easy. Can we get this going?
Yes, please do.
All right, I would move that we approve the Class A fermented malt beverage and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Village Liquor Store, Kimberly White Agent with an effective date of July 1st, 2009 through June 30th, 2010, as recommended by village administrator.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion as stated, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I'll move we approve the Class A fermented malt beverage license for Freedom Value Center, Inc., Paul Kirk Agent with an effective date of July 1st, 2009 through June 30th, 2010, as recommended by village administrator.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, state, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I move to approve the Class B fermented malt, malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license with an effective date of July 1st, 2009 through June 30th, 2010 for LDJT, Inc., doing business as The Village Inn. Lee Halverson, Agent, Malaloo Inn, Inc., doing business as Malaloo Inn. Peggy Malter, Agent, Stars Bar, Inc., doing business as Stars Bar. William Soder, Agent. Zanar, Inc., doing business as Cozy Corner. Mark Zappa, Agent. Lambden, Inc., doing business as Mama Maria's Restaurant. Anna Maria Burr, Agent. The Cabin NH, Inc., doing business as North Point, North Point Bar and Grill. Stephen McCarthy, Agent. And Zappa and Zappa doing business as Muds and Suds. Mark Zappa, Agent, as recommended by the village administrator. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied. Period. I'd like to second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandra.
Just a question, meaning no disrespect to, to Mark, but do we have an unresolved issue with respect to the discussion that we had last month? You recall the discussion that Mark was going to have with the gentleman concerning the fence prior to the renewal of the license?
Mark did have that discussion and...
Is that all resolved and everybody's happy?
Yeah, Kevin's absence is testimony to the fact that it's resolved. No, I would like to say for the record that he and I get along fine. It's, I'm going to throw a little editorial in here. If it wasn't for the village process, we probably would have had this done privately two years ago. So unfortunately, it just turned into an adversarial situation, kind of due to the process and some not getting together. But no, there's, like I said, his absence here. I talked to him a couple of days ago. In fact, right after Terry left me a message, we were out back working and I said, "Just for record, are we good?" And he goes, "Yeah." And he said, "Tell him down there, everything's good." So, like I said, his absence here is testimony to that and he's putting his screening in and, and I think everything is fine. The issues weren't that huge to get over in the first place.
This motion as stated though, doesn't really address, I mean, this is just the alcohol and beverage license renewal.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that pertains. I'm not sure how this interacts. I'm just relaying that we are issue free with the neighbor.
Okay. Laurie?
Normally, since there is no conditional use permit quali, or process that was involved that kind of stipulated what would go on to the alcohol license, we're going right straight to the alcohol license, which in normally it, it says whether the person has the perimeter, how it's marked, those type of items, whether it's closed in, if there's access to that area screened off from minors, that type of thing. So that can be somewhat called out on the operator's license as it is.
Okay. And I'm sure Mr. Zappa will recuse himself from this vote. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, Daryl, want to read the next one?
What, this is a roll down situation?
Well, yeah. Starts at one end.
In that case, I move to approve the over the counter tobacco sales licenses for The Village Inn, Malaloo Inn, Stars Bar, Village Liquor Store, North Point Bar and Grill and Freedom Value Center with an effective date of 1 July, 2009 through 30 June, 2010, as recommended by the village administrator.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, motion as stated, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. And finally, the coin operated amusement license.
Move to approve coin operated amusement license for Malaloo Inn, Stars Bar, The Village Inn, North Point Bar and Grill, Muds and Suds and Cozy Corner with an effective date of July 1st, 2009 through June 30th, 2010, as recommended by village administrator.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Then again, Mark will recuse himself. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. You have before you a resolution that was presented at the, at a recent meeting of the Intergovernmental Group and it's presented here for us to review and, and hopefully approve. Attached to this is a document from Dean Knutson, the mayor of the city of Hudson. I'd like to read it. For those who are tuned in and don't have this in front of them, it's a Framework of Sustainability Community Principles. You may have read in the Hudson Star Observer, there was a report on this topic. I won't go into that report, but I will read Dean Knutson's comments. Why adopt a common framework of environmental principles? Environmental concerns extend beyond boundaries. Our Hudson area governments each have an ongoing commitment to the adoption of environmentally sound practices. Our individual efforts will continue even as we strengthen and extend our effectiveness through collaboration. We are neighbors that recognize the need to work together to preserve Hudson while looking to the future and to the opportunities that sustainable practices can bring to our community. The adoption of these common principles should serve as a model for others. Each municipality retains the ability to make decisions in the best interest of their citizens by jointly seeking innovative, collaborative and flexible solutions. We hope to lead the way in the protection of our environment in the Hudson area. And so I would open this up for discussion, both members of the board as well as anyone from the audience who has anything they would like to share.
George, I was reading through and I, what does, what does this obligate us to do? Or is it just a statement of we're for environmentally sound practices? Just a statement to be making a statement or does it recommend a course of action or...
It is my...
Can you make one comment to that, George?
Please do.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I read through it pretty carefully. There's a lot of weasel language in here, so it doesn't really require you to do anything.
Then I move to reject it.
And then George, you can answer.
Yeah. I believe that a document such as this simply brings it to our conscious level that anything we're going to do...
I move to reject it. We can talk about it, but I...
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
You got that? Okay. I'll start over again. I believe that what this does is bring to the conscious level any actions that we have that just give us the opportunity to ask, to pause and ask ourselves, what are we doing here to the environment or for the environment? That's my understanding and my interpretation of sustainability.
I was at the same intergovernmental meeting that George was at when this was presented and I share some of the comments that you just made. Since there's now a motion on the floor, I'm going to have to change the way I'm going to vote. I was going to indicate that I will not oppose this because to oppose this is almost like saying you're opposed to cute puppies. But from a real practical standpoint, the frustration that I've got is that it is really in the category of a feel-good resolution. It, it indicates that we are in favor of the principles that are here. It does not commit us to anything. It does not bind us to anything. And a resolution that really has no specific or bona fide purpose...
Or teeth.
Or, or teeth seems to have little effect. Having said all of that, I will not, would not have opposed it for the reasons that I said because it does not carry a downside to it. I'm, I am going to have to oppose this resolution because I think it would, it would cast us in...
Oppose the motion?
I, I am going to oppose the motion that's now on the floor because I think it would place us in an unfortunate perception that for some reason, the village of North Hudson is anti these principles. And nebulous as they are, I don't think that we want to go on record as being opposed to a framework of sustainable community principles as drafted.
So I'll put together a framework of principles and we pass resolutions that have no meaning whatsoever because we're worried about what somebody thinks. We don't do anything contrary to any of these things. It's, it's almost a pointless document to approve. Who's feeling better about all this? The guy who drafted it?
Does it include noise?
I think it's just asking, saying that the, the leaders are going to stop and think before they make the decisions that would affect our environment, our...
I'm sorry, I haven't seen these principles, but me, the environment isn't the only decision you need to consciously think about before making a decision.
Would you like to?
No, there, there is, there is one point in here that says, "Recognize that free markets allocate resources most efficiently and property rights must be respected." It's a little more than the environment. I mean, this is almost a political statement.
Well, it's in general.
What did it say about free markets?
Well, no, I'm not opposed... Well, no, I'm not opposed to any of it. My rejection of it is, as a board approving something that has no teeth and is just a statement, I mean, what's-
Well, it does say, "A framework of adopted principles may assist government employees and elected officials in moving towards more environmentally sound practices."
Are they attached?
Is there a framework? Are they coming? Are we approving something to open the door for-
And/or have we ever done anything in opposition to these things?
No, I'm pro-environment and puppies, but I'm confused by this document. I don't want to oppose it, but I don't wanna support it either.
I think your framework, that it refers to our simply points one through four below.
Perhaps it would be appropriate to read this, so that everybody knows what the topic of discussion is.
Why? We're voting on it.
Yeah.
And I already know how I'm gonna vote. What am I gonna worry about, what somebody's thinking out there on it?
Do you represent us?
Well, these, all these items, all these items are available-
I think that would be appropriate. I think you should read it.
This is a public hearing, so.
Whereas the towns of Hudson, Troy, and St. Joseph, the village of North Hudson, the city of Hudson, and the Hudson School District believe in working together as leaders in the adoption of sustainable practices, and whereas governments have a responsibility to provide cost-effective services to the public, and whereas a framework of adopted principles may assist government employees and elected officials in moving toward more environmentally sound practices, and whereas the commitment of Hudson-area governments to sustainable practices can serve as a model for others to move toward more environmentally sound practices, to identify and support opportunities, and to encourage economic development in our community. Now therefore, in an effort to seek innovative, collaborative, and flexible solutions to the challenges that confront us by sharing our knowledge and by coordinating our actions, we strive to, one, reduce our reliance on materials extracted from the earth that contribute to a buildup of pollution in our environment; two, reduce our contribution to the buildup of synthetic substances in our environment; three, reduce our contribution to the physical degradation of our environment; four, recognize that free markets allow, allocate resources most effectively, and property rights must be respected. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the towns of Hudson, Troy, and St. Joseph, the village of North Hudson, the city of Hudson, and the Hudson School District declare our commitment to sustainability as outlined in the principles above, and will consider these principles whenever possible in our planning, policymaking, and practices.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Okay.
You know, I think, you know, maybe one is kinda highlighting conservation to a certain extent, and I'm all for that. Number two, the reduction of our contribution to the buildup of synthetic substances in our environment. I don't know that I agree with that. It's quite possible that the buildup of synthetic substances may be beneficial. You know? The other thing is, is, you know, it seems like we're talking about environmental issues, and then number four, they're talking about resources with free markets and property rights. It's kinda, it's kinda getting out of slant. And if you wanted to talk about community principles, then there's ethics and all of this sort of stuff. To me, you know, I just don't see the purpose. I just don't see the purpose that, we'll approve this, it'll get filed, and we'll forget about it.
Listen, I don't have, I hope I'm clear. I'm not trying to be a thorn, but that's where it's gonna go. It's, we're gonna approve something that goes in a drawer somewhere.
Yeah. And I, and I think it behooves all of us to think all of the time about what is most beneficial for our constituents and the community and the environment and all that sort of stuff. That goes without saying-
It goes with the tier. It's when you get elected, you are sworn to do such things.
I just don't see how this is gonna benefit us or the community if we pass it.
It's not a good government action to approve this. I mean, we can, we can say all we want that we are pro-environment, but our actions on, on voting on specific issues will prove whether we are or not.
Okay, make a comment, please? Real briefly, you know, it took me four years of struggling to achieve a Green Star Award of doing absolutely nothing more in daily business, away from representing the village residents or thinking through these board meetings. But it's those simple things that don't take any more work that make us, allow us the opportunity to do little things that matter. Potentially, adopting this framework, somebody in the future might say, you know, "It's wonderful that you lead by example." I have no idea. I don't think it's well-written either, but I think to not, we should either table it or we should personally vote for it because of the fact that ultimately, if Dean Hanson put this together, maybe there's something coming down the road a year or two that if you are part of, you know, this type of framework and so sports sustenance, you know, we will aid your community in something or another. And I don't wanna go off as being a Mad Max of the world.
I don't notice any follow-up date or anything coming.
No, I agree. It's gonna end up in a garbage can, but why not approve it and-
I don't care if you do or not. I just made, moved it along. I just made the motion, because we're debating something that's, it's like saying breathing is good.
Yeah, there's language in here that's undefined.
You know, I mean-
I couldn't agree with you more, you know? And you hit it on the head. It's weasel language. It's very poorly written. It would be nice if it was a nicer, well-prepared document.
Well, then express yourself and reject it. I don't like the document, and that's why I, I don't have any idea with the ideas, but they're asking me to approve this.
And if you're gonna change the document, you're gonna have to rewrite it, because these other municipalities have approved it as-is, as the language states, so you're gonna have to write your own.
So, the fact that I agree with 53% of it and object to 47% of it, that's how I have to go forward. And if everybody else has acknowledged this and agreed it, and we as North Hudson choose not to agree to this, what will happen? Still goes through. Everything is fine, it's just that North Hudson didn't agree with the verbiage as written. I'm asking.
That would be my understanding.
I would prefer that this was not here, in all candor.
Me too.
But, but it is here.
Right.
And I don't think that there is a downside to adopting it, even though I find it unnecessary.
I find it-
Having said that, I think there is a downside to reject it. I think that we would, we would be perceived as out of step with our other areas, units of local government. And this is somewhat analogous to sausage, perhaps. The night that this was being drafted, and George and I were both there, there were people that were very passionate about this and spent a couple of hours wordsmithing this. And it was still going on when you and I left, as I recall.
And this is-
I, I would urge us to approve it because it's here, because I don't see a downside to the approval. I do see a downside to the rejection.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that, too. It's not very specific as to how to do it, but I think it would reflect badly on the village, too, if we said, "No, we're not for sustainability." And it's like some of the other resolutions that, you know, we've passed that you don't really do anything with, but it's kind of, you know, like such-and-such-a-day. And, you know, it's just acknowledged with the idea, so I think that even though, someone's gotta come up with a framework eventually, that's probably what they're working towards. But I agree with Darrell, too, that it would look bad for us if we didn't approve it.
It wound up being a compromise. I, the word "sustainable" just grates on me terribly. It just is, feels so left-wing. But the fact is, this is what's here, and we can approve it or reject it. I urge us to approve it.
George, I have two questions. Which of these bodies have approved this at this point? I assume the city of Hudson has with the-
City of Hudson has. I know the town of Troy has. I'm uncertain where it stands with the others.
And my second question is, is a motion to table greater than the motion to reject?
They did have some time guidelines on it.
The answer to that question is yes.
Yeah, they did have timeline on when they wanted this, all the municipalities.
I'll remove my motion. I got my two cents in on what, how I felt about it.
Mr. Cuthbert, would you-
I think Sandra seconded it.
I did.
Oh, Sandra seconded?
What is the answer to the table?
Yes, that's a priority motion.
Well, then, does it matter?
Well, if it's going to be, a motion's going to be made, you don't wanna to go the opposite on this motion and have a negative motion.
Okay.
The cleanest thing is, Mark has tried to withdraw and-
I'll withdraw my second and move that we table this. Where was the deadline?
It was scheduled for this meeting.
Oh.
And they wanted all of them to be done soon.
I, I haven't heard anything from, I mean, who, who started this? Can there be someone here to come talk to us about why the government bodies should approve this? I mean, I would like to hear a little bit more about this, where this is coming from and why it's important.
I think the discussion that we're having now is parallel, almost identical, to the one that they had at the Hudson City Council. And if memory serves me correctly, that was not a unanimous vote there, either there was one who voted no or voted against it.
But the body that is bringing, initially brought this forward was the Intergovernmental?
Yes.
Committee?
And in fact, it was the first meeting that Darrell and I attended, and this was presented to us at that time. I don't know how long they had been working on it.
So a motion to table would be similar to a motion to reject?
Yes, it would be. And so now what we have is-
It might be an easier-
Now what I'm looking for is a motion to adopt the resolution.
But a motion to table is higher than the others.
Yes, and while you're still debating, you've withdrawn your motion. The second is withdrawn, so there is no motion on the floor.
No, I move that we table. But there's no second.
I haven't heard one.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion to table is not debatable, calls for an immediate vote.
Might be a roll call? Yeah, we better do a roll call. We'll start down with Mr. Thomas.
No, I don't wanna table it.
Is Waylon?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
Needs a majority. How many, was that 43?
You got four and three. Four in favor, three against. I'm sorry.
No.
Four.
So it's not tabled.
Motion to table failed.
Right, it failed. I move approval of the resolution as drafted.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I'm gonna go a roll call vote on this one, too. This time, we'll start the opposite end of the table. Mark?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Klein, yes.
Can I have their no?
Um, no.
Well, this is the first time I've ever made an impact. I'm voting yes.
I'm right here.
And I do that with, with the same concerns you have, Mark, with the same ones you have, Joe and Sandra. This is the most poorly-written document. Next time I see Dean Hanson, I'm gonna talk to him about it.
Knutson.
Or Dean Knutson. I'm sorry.
It's not the grocery store.
Yeah, I'm thinking about dinner. Um, no. Honest to God, thank you.
That's gonna cost you, Jim.
Good luck writing that.
I hope they're watching us on TV and-
I think the word that you had used when you, did you report on the Hudson?
Tomorrow. But I-
That's not my day.
It wasn't yours. It was Randy's? I think he used the word on something that I thought was so innocuous.
It's a good word. It will come up again.
I have a feeling it will.
Yeah.
Ah, I, it's, okay. We have an ordinance that we want to amend, and I think, Terry, you must be the one, do you wanna discuss this?
This is gonna tie in really well with what Mike's gonna talk about, too, I think, but Bill Gilbert or Gilbertson? Bill Gilbert is looking to adjust some lot lines, and we've talked about that, but the way our ordinance is stated at the moment probably doesn't allow for that. And so if we want to allow for that, we just need to make a simple change to our subdivision ordinance. And so that's where you see number 25 there, where it used to read "plating and subdivision fees," it'll now read "plating, comma, adjustment of lot lines and subdivision fees." Actually, no, I'm jumping ahead of myself. What we're actually changing here is just the language that talks about what we can charge fees for. And the reason we're doing it is because, still because of the Bill Gilbert issue and the ability to allow lot line changes in pre-1987 lots to be 10,000 square feet, that's the underlying issue. But in order to do that correctly, some changes have to be made in the, in the ordinance. And the major change has to go through a public hearing, and so we didn't have the public hearing in time, and that's gonna be at the plan commission. So that's not before us tonight, the major change in the ordinance. What this does, though, is to sort of fix the ordinance to allow us to charge fees for adjustment of lot lines, and also it fixes an error, and that's number 25. It allows us to charge fees for adjustment of lot lines. And then there's an error in our current ordinance where we refer throughout our ordinance to section 62-3, but 62-3 doesn't exist. So this fixes that problem by, instead of referring to 62-3, which used to exist but doesn't exist anymore, we're gonna refer to the scheduled fees, cash dispositions, and charges, which is where these things actually are.
I just wanna clarify, though, that at the end of that-
Yeah, sorry, I got lost in there.
We, in our code book, there is an editor's note that says that the fee schedule has been removed from and is adopted by resolution. I don't wanna make it sound like we're total idiots and that we didn't account for that. It is there, but it's, this really states it clearly.
Not totally idiots, just partial idiots.
Yeah, sure.
You'll also notice, if you turn that page over and you look at the back, there's a list there, 62-2, and it's, it says, "Required. A license or permit shall be required for the sale of each of the following," et cetera, et cetera. And you'll notice that there are 26 things in the list, and all we're looking for here is the ordinance change to number 25, which is "plating, comma, adjustment of lines, comma, and subdivision." We're inserting "adjustment of lot lines" into that list.
George, can I just clarify with Jerry? I'm aware of the Gilbert situation, and that would be a different issue down the road.
That's correct.
This, this proposed change would be necessary to accommodate that if that would be approved down the road, but it's, it's really not germane to this issue per se.
I think that's correct, yeah.
It almost seems like we should table this.
What's even better, though, is it then allows us to charge a fee for-
Right, understand that, but they're-
We haven't approved the process yet.
They're separate, they're separate issues from the standpoint of this change in the ordinance.
That's right.
Yep.
It might be better served to have this come through after the other ordinance that goes through plan and through the board, then this would be the second step of it.
Isn't this the first step?
Well, if we, if it's not allowed- If we, if it's not allowed, then how can we set it up to charge a fee for? If our current code book doesn't allow it...
You're allowed to change lot lines. That's all this thing is saying. No, that's all this thing now is saying.
Pardon?
You're allowed to change a lot.
No, when he first stated it, he said our current ordinance does not allow, doesn't seem to allow for it.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I probably wasn't clear enough. You are allowed to change lot lines, but we have no way to charge a fee for it, and you're not allowed to change lot lines in the Bill Gilbert situation where you'd end up with a lot less than 10,000 square feet.
I see these two, I'm having trouble, because I see these two completely separate.
I thought this would allow to change, to charge a fee in the event...
In the event.
That situation was later done.
I think that's what this does. It allows us to charge a fee.
Right, for not only just that situation, but other situations.
Actually, we don't have a motion on the floor yet.
I'll move approval of ordinance number zero-eight dash zero-zero-nine.
I'll second.
Thank you. Did you get that, Becky?
Thank you.
As I look at this, it says here, section sixty-two dash three. But we don't have a sixty-two dash three?
Well, we do. I mean, it's in the ordinance book, and what it's in there right now is the word reserved.
Okay, so we're taking out the reserved section.
All right. Right. You're striking the word reserved, and you're adding scheduled fees, cash deposits, and charges. That just tells people where to look for this.
All right, because that wasn't part of here. I know it's in the book, but, okay.
And the fees, whatever they are, are not part of the ordinance. They're a separate schedule. Can be changed from time to time without changing the ordinance. Is that right?
That's correct. That's exactly correct. That's why you do it this way. That's why you structure it this way, rather than having to change a subdivision ordinance or a zoning ordinance, which requires a public hearing and is more complex.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this?
Klein seconded.
All in favor of the motion? Indicate by a "o".
Do we need a roll call? Is it an ordinance?
You don't need a roll call. You don't ever need a roll call vote, actually, unless your own ordinance requires it.
We do for spending money.
Well, that may be at Village North Hudson ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mark?
Klein seconded.
Mike, you're on, Plan Commission. Mike takes the stage. You will notice that there was a replacement to the meeting minutes of May twentieth. At the top right corner of the replacement is the word replacement, so you know which one to refer to. Take it away, Mike.
On the Plan Commission meeting for May, we had two items of business. The first item was the Bill Gilbert application for adjustment of lot lines. We discussed that in April. He was the Plan Commission in March. Basically, he owns three lots. They are contiguous. He has a house and attached garage, and it turns out that actually the garage creeps over into one of the lots. The house is on one lot, and the garage creeps into one of the other lots. He would like to readjust lot lines so that he would end up with three lots, just like he started with, but all of his house and garage would be in just one lot. As we talked about before, this was a pre-1987 ordinance, platted lot. Lots, nineteen seventy-four, they were platted. In nineteen eighty-seven, the ordinance was changed to require 13,000 feet for single, square feet. For single-family lots, it used to be 10,000 square feet before that. All three of his lots are over 10,000 feet and would be grandfathered in if he made no changes. Various legal councils, the engineers group, everybody saying on a strict interpretation of what they consider, if you readjust a lot line, you're creating a new lot. And so therefore, it kicks it into the, after the nineteen eighty-seven rules, which would need to have to be 13,000 square feet. We discussed it on the Plan Commission. We certainly aren't going to argue or disagree with the attorneys. That may indeed be, just as Terry said, how you have to interpret that now. The person making the motion said, I'm a common sense person. What we're trying to do is let him put the house in one lot. He still ends up with three lots that, if they would have drawn the lines right the first time, they would all be acceptable because they're over 10,000 square feet. And so we voted on the Plan Commission unanimously to recommend that you approve his request. We also know that there is this gray area. Also, part of our motion was to, that you would look at clarifying the ordinance, which Terry just talked about, which I guess we'll be talking about our next Plan Commission. I just looked after the meeting.
One interruption.
Yes, sir.
What came up after that meeting was, in order to change the subdivision ordinance, you need a public hearing, and there has to be two insertions of a notice, and so there wouldn't have been time to do that this evening, get all the notices in, and that's why it's been pushed back to your group again.
Yeah, which, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I just looked at, just from the discussions we all had, we all agreed that he should be able to do that. It still would give him adequate lots size for houses. He would make all the setbacks. All that would happen. I went back to our comprehensive plan we worked so hard on, and in the housing section, there's just one little thing that says under housing needs, single-family vacancy rates could indicate a need for owner-occupied housing in general. And we're running out of space and places. There's, running out of places to put houses. And the comprehensive plan said it may be achieved by encouraging a mix of housing types from developers or reducing the minimum lot size for residential properties. So, you know, the whole thing that we've seen over the years of bigger and bigger houses, bigger and bigger lots, and now it's tipping, and maybe we should be going the other way. It's just a comment from the comprehensive plan. Same thing with the residential survey as part of that, that the majority of the public thought that we need more single-family housing in this village. And just a small aside, I whispered over to Terry during the meeting, Jim and Joe, and certainly Mr. President, you'll know this, seven or eight years ago, the village was considering putting its sidewalks. And I was talking to, I slipped a note to one of the members, saying, why don't you, why don't you just make sure there's no taking or condemnation? Oh, no, 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 we have to consider that. And of course, my street was one of those streets they're considering. And the lots in our street are five to 10,000 square feet. Nobody has a 10,000 square foot lot. And yet this village was willing to take property at that time and make them even smaller, so. That's where, as a Plan Commission, we kind of thought that, yeah, you can, we agreed that he should be able to change his lot lines if you can make the ordinance work. So that was, that's where we left that.
I'll move to approve the request.
I think we need to wait until the next meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I mean, we did, but we figured that, yeah, you'd come up with the action to take is then changing the ordinance will be necessary.
It'll come before this.
I don't think we disagree with that.
Can we even ask a question tonight about this? The way this all filtered out then, Mike, the lots ended up over 10,000 square feet. And then did he end up with the buffer between his garage and the new lot line?
What he was requesting, actually, he started out with three lots where the sizes were 12,086, 12,800, 12,900 square feet. When he's done readjusting the lines, two of them are over 13,000 square feet. And the third one's over 10,000. And all the setbacks and everything applied.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike.
Matter of fact, Terry might tell you, I even took a stab at writing an ordinance change, and he took it, and I'm sure it'll look a lot different when he's done with it. It'll...
He meaning Terry or he meaning Bill?
Terry. No, no, Terry. Our village attorney, our present village attorney.
Good that you said present village attorney.
Yes. Anything else? So, yeah, there'll be no action for you tonight on that. And then the other thing I also brought up with you last month on the ordinance oh-six, two thousand nine, amending chapter ninety-eight zoning on the sections ninety-eight, thirty-three, thirty-four, fifty-six, and fifty-seven due to the Supreme Court rulings. As I told you last time, we wouldn't be ready this time, maybe the next time, and so as an action item, all of the Plan Commission members were to make a list of acceptable allowable uses on the various types of commercial properties we have, and then a list of conditional use, conditional uses, and get them to Becky by tomorrow. So, and that'll give Terry time to put them together into an ordinance that we can discuss at our next Plan Commission meeting. So we hope to have something for you next month.
Thank you. Now, the next one, what you have under new business.
New business.
We already heard from Fred this evening.
Yeah, Fred came to see us.
What would be the next step in this process? Has he given you any ideas of what...
What he told us was, he actually owns an outlot north of here. Matter of fact, coincidentally, it's south of my property line. I'm one of the property neighbors to him. Other people are also. Between Lynn Circle, the stubout in Lynn Circle on the north side, there's two more outlots owned by other people, and then he has the third one. And what he was proposing was, if you, Public Works, somebody was interested in purchasing his lot to put a city garage in there. There was really no action we could take on it. It was just kind of, he wanted to talk to somebody and pass it on to you and Public Works and see if there was something you're interested in. He has a lot that he thought would be a great place for a city shed, but you would also need access rates from two other property owners. I don't think there's anything more the Plan Commission did at this point unless there's some direction from the board that you're thinking of buying that or actually buy it before we do anything with it.
Well, the first thing that comes to mind is I think that the board or, the board would have to take a look at the property and see, okay, does this look like a viable piece of property for its purposes, number one? Number two, what compensation would Fred expect from the board? If that amount is over $150,000, we would need to take that before the electorate to see if they would approve that. So there are quite a few hurdles that would have to be jumped before we could get to that point.
Yeah, and from our point of view as a Plan Commission, we appreciate the fact that he was, he says here's something you might be interested in, and we'll pass it on and see if anyone's interested.
And I truly agree that if, in fact, it is advantageous and he were to offer it at a wonderful price and out of the goodness of his heart to help out the village, it's something we'd be foolish not to at least look at. So, you know, I think it is worth jumping through the first couple of hoops anyway.
I don't know if you have a committee that might look at that or just have Public Works look at it, but you would need access from two other property owners to get to it. It is landlocked.
You can't access it from thirty-five?
No.
Oh, you can't, okay.
You'd have to buy his house in Tarrytown.
Oh, interesting.
He would keep that part.
It would seem like the location for a garage would be sort of the last step. Is there discussion and consideration of building a garage in the first step?
Well, we're currently leasing property.
Right.
And garage, so.
At a lot lower cost than building a building.
Again, he just brought it up in case, because someday he knows that maybe he and the other property owners will get together and they'll put houses in there or something. I don't know.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move Public Works to the next item for discussion. We'll hold off on the Finance Committee recommendation until after we go through Public Works because of item, Public Works, item E ties in with Finance Committee, item B. E, B. Did I have that right?
We got it.
Oh, it doesn't matter?
Finance, I believe we said that we were gonna table that until I had close costs because I thought I was gonna get amounts tonight, and I don't have amounts to...
How do we resurfacing project?
Yeah, B. Twelve B, we weren't ready at Finance.
Well, we're not ready with twelve.
We were gonna combine those two, so we were getting one.
So we want to just separate them then? I mean, we need to vote tonight on that resurfacing project.
No, I mean, we can pay for it out of our general funds and then go for the financing and reimburse the general funds.
We can do it in that order?
Yep.
But I think what you're saying is we need to approve it, so we do need to do E, thirteen E, tonight. We just don't need to do twelve.
We don't have to do twelve B then?
Right, so Finance can come first. That's what we...
And let's do Finance.
Sorry.
I think on that project, I think what we need to recognize is that project is gonna happen on a timetable.
Yep.
Irrespective of what we do.
And you can bring that up again.
Okay, we'll do Finance, and we'll ask if anybody wants to make a motion to pay our bills.
I do, if I can find it. I move that we approve the May two thousand and nine non-recurring claims totaling $31,365.53.
Second? Any discussion on paying the bills? If not, we need a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okey. No Zappa. That takes care of the claims. We're gonna skip B then. Oh, you wanna vote, you wanna vote yes to pay our bills?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna skip B for the, do we need to table that?
Sure.
I entertain a motion to table item B, authorization solicit loans for the resurfacing project that we will discuss later.
I'll also move that.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to table? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Item C is to set up an exchange server. You have quite a detailed issue statement in front of you regarding this. I would ask, I'm familiar with the topic, but I'll ask Gloria, do you want to make any additional comments to what we have here? There is a key paragraph here that I want you all to read again just before we even look at the motion, and it's the one that says, it's right by the middle hole. It says, we are statutorily responsible. And I think there's a motivation there for approving this. But Gloria, you want to go ahead and, anything you want to add to this? Quite detailed.
It's pretty clear. It's basically, we'd like to have our email accounts housed on our server. We do have a small business server now, which we hadn't had in the past. So we didn't have the capabilities to do this before. Well, now that we have the server, we can house the email accounts locally on our server where they are currently housed at Press Center on their account, and we access it, and they send it down. It keeps all the records here within the village, first of all, and then, secondly, the trustees and the staff would access via Internet these, and use the email accounts there instead of their personal home email accounts, which would eliminate them being intercommungled with your personal items.
I'll move to accept the quote from Press Center and approve the spending up to $1,400 to set up the exchange server and spam software for... to set up the exchange server and spam software for the village's email user accounts.
Hold on a second.
And I apologize for this. I do want to say that CIT, kind of at the last minute, I had been negotiating with them regarding the hours that it was going to take them to perform this service for us. They did cut it down from sixteen hours to eight hours, but it's still well over what the Press Center, I don't know, would be.
Are you satisfied with the service that we're currently getting from Press Center and confident that they will be able to provide us with the service that we need for this? I'm as concerned with the service as I am with the cost.
And that, that is why I initially went out and started to research this, was because I've just, we've had some experiences that we haven't been satisfied with. And, but on the other hand, I don't want to get myself into a, associated with something that's going to be a huge expense all the time and it's about more than what the village can afford to spend on, on computer.
So you're okay with the motion that we're about to vote on?
Yes.
Gloria, just one question I've got is, it says IP address, twenty dollars a month. Will we each, as a board member, require a separate IP address or will one IP address cover it?
It'll be, the IP address will be on our server here.
That's cool.
And it'll be replaced with, we will no longer need our email accounts at Press Center, so there'll be a reduction there in exchange for this twenty dollars.
Since email activity is public record, public information and can be requested by the public, do we have a retention policy in place right now indicating the length of time that we will have emails?
Not a formal policy, but that, a lot of the records management is governed by the state. They require us to, to have that. I keep all emails. That's just my policy right now.
For what length of time?
Well, for right now, it's indefinite until a lot of this technology.
Because we don't need to keep it indefinitely. We, we can set a retention policy and then we need to be in compliance with our policy.
Right, and we haven't gotten to that stage. This is kind of, this is kind of that first step. There's a lot of things that need to be addressed with records management. And that's, I went to the records management seminar and that was where a lot of this came to focus. And, but this is like the first step, getting that in-house.
I don't know where you delegate that, but I, I would think that that, it would have some priority for us, George, to have, have a retention policy developed.
I know exactly where that's going to go.
Now, Public Works.
Goals and objectives. Develop a retention policy.
Some of the, the problem is that the computer age is moving along so quickly that they didn't get through all the issues that come along with emails and now we got telephone issues with the hand or the cell phones and the communication with texts. But now they've got to address that also, so it.
Day meeting, the state or the federal?
The state.
We have a motion on the table. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 By saying sign. Motion carries. That takes care of Finance, item C, and I'd like to discuss briefly item D, Village Hall Generator Purchase specification for request, proposal. If you'll recall, this goes back a while. The board approved the purchase of a emergency generator. We then contacted Cummins Diesel, or Cummins is the company. They did a in-depth investigation of our needs and came up with a set of specifications for the Village Hall. What we need to do now is give Gloria the authorization so that she can solicit proposals for the purchase of that generator and its installation. If, I'm not sure if you recall this, but when we built the Village Hall addition and renovated this down in the basement, there is a transfer switch and the piping is already installed so that the installation should be relatively simple. The transfer switch, I believe, was an eight thousand dollar purchase and it's already in place. So, anything you want to add, Gloria?
I guess I would like assistance with pulling this one together because I do have quite a large document, but it needs to be put in the format of a request for proposal with our language stating that we can, we have the right to, uh, we don't necessarily have to take the lowest bid. We need, we can take what best suits the village.
Can I assist Gloria with that, Terry?
All right.
I'm going to ask somebody to make a motion this.
I'll move.
Move to.
Solicit the bids.
Authorize Gloria to solicit for bids?
For bids?
Not, not bids, request for proposal.
Request proposal.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. We have Public Works. Mr. Cawthorne?
Nope.
No what?
No Public Works for me.
Excuse me. You know what? Worse than having.
I can go on and on and on.
Okay, Darrell.
This must be a plum assignment because they give it to the new guy, so. At our last meeting, we did approve and are recommending for approval by the board a number of items. The first one is item B, hot patching and crack filling project bids. That did result in a motion to approve a bid from Allied Blacktop Corporation in an amount not to exceed four thousand two hundred and seven dollars. And that was approved by Public Works and is presented here as a recommendation for approval by the full board.
Also move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
We going to vote? Aye.
Okay, we're spending money, so I'll do a roll call. Mark, you want to start?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
George, yes?
Yes.
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 Next.
Uh, we had a recommendation on seal coating and Mark recommended that we accept a bid from Scott Construction to seal coat four streets. There were actually seven, I believe, that, that were up for consideration, but based on the amount of the bids, the recommendation is to accept a bid from Scott Construction to seal coat four streets. Summer Street North, Fourth Street North to Galahad Road. Galahad Road North from Summer Street to the north end of Ferry Landing Park. Galahad Place North and Woodcrest Drive North in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. And that was approved by Public Works and is submitted here for recommendation.
Is that your, are you making that motion?
And also move.
Second?
Second.
Is okay, Mark, if we give that one to Sandra? Thank you very much. Again, a spending issue, so Jim, you want to start this one?
Yes.
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 And shall we paint the streets? You missed crack filling?
Yeah.
Oh.
Those were supposed to be together.
I thought they were together.
They were together.
They were together.
Crack filling is a separate spending item, huh?
Crack filling was eighteen eight seventy-nine fifty-five. We haven't voted on that.
Oh.
The motion.
Yeah, I see, we got two.
Okay, so the hot patch.
The hot patch is Allied Blacktop for four thousand two hundred and seven dollars. The crack filling is also from Allied. That's a separate line item of eighteen thousand eight seventy-nine fifty-five, my oversight. Thanks, Mark.
And I move we approve that.
Do you want it?
Second.
You approving it for eighteen eight seventy-nine and fifty-five cents?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Got it. Roll call, we'll start with Mark.
Yes.
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
George, yes?
Yes, George.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we get to paint the streets.
The crosswalks and the line painting. Mark recommended that we accept a bid from, that was Varner Asphalt. And the cost in the bid and the recommendation is at a cost not to exceed two thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars. And I think there were a total of some, nineteen, nineteen intersections that were included in the recommendation. And also move.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Darrell, you want to talk a little bit about the Wisconsin Department of Transportation and Route Thirty-five?
Well, that has come up a couple of times already tonight. That project is going forward independent of what the village might do. And that will resurface the, the traffic lanes on, on that street. The, the opportunity that the village has is to, simultaneous with that project, resurface the exterior four feet on that road. Now, while it would be possible for us not to do that, I think it would be pretty foolish for us to have a major highway project and resurfacing done. And I do have the minutes of the County Transportation Committee, which is approving the acceptance of the local force contract in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for that payment overlay. So that project is in fact going to happen. If we piggyback in effect with that project and also do the exterior four feet, which is our responsibility on each side, it's about twenty-nine thousand dollars and change is the estimate that comes from the County Highway Department. As we talked about this in Public Works, there are the possibilities of some unanticipated expenses that may come as a result of that. Once the surface is removed, there could be some voids or some other items that are undetectable at, at this point. So the recommendation that we were bringing forth from Public Works is that we approve an amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars for that project, which then will have the entire road, not only the traffic ways, but the four feet on each side. In other words, it would be a curb-to-curb project resurfaced this year. So our recommendation is that we approve an amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars as our portion of that resurfacing project. And I would so move to put, get that on the table.
Second.
That is actually, if we take a look at the meeting minutes, you may want to just change that little item there in the first sentence. We're going to resurface eight tenths of a mile, not twenty-four feet. Is that right? Or is it right as, as it stated? A twenty-four foot section of Highway Thirty-five? Just want to make sure your minutes are.
Well, the twenty-four foot section is the, is, is the traffic lanes, the width of it.
Right. Okay, so it is correct as stated.
Right, that the county is doing, or the state.
Right. The county and state are doing the traffic lanes and we're talking about the four feet on each side.
Maybe we should add from Malalo Bridge to Summers. Summers.
And that's eight tenths of.
And that's in there, whatever that length is.
Okay.
Unless you don't think we need it.
Any discussion? Anybody have any questions regarding this?
Hurry up and approve it before somebody changes their mind. We don't want these people backing out on us.
That's not going to happen. We have a motion and a second. We will be discussing at a later date where that thirty-eight thousand dollars will come from. But for now, it will come out of our operating budget?
Correct. We were going to amend our budget for this expenditure because it was nothing, something that was not budgeted for last year, was unexpected, and so we, we just amend our budget.
Spending, start with you, Mr. Z.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And finally, discussion topic for your, the shopyards.
We spent a little bit of time talking about the shopyards prompted by the fact that there was a fire last December. In case some of you didn't know that, there, there was a fairly significant fire that resulted in the destruction of a building, which has now been clear-sighted. There was a request to consider some additional infrastructure with respect to water and lines that would be installed. It became pretty clear, and I think trustee Zappa was right on point. It, it became pretty clear that this is a larger discussion than simply, should we install some additional fire protection lines and water lines to that site? That is really the only large industrial site in the village and it really segues into an economic development discussion. What, what's the future of that site? What's the, what is the opportunity for the village to have economic development in that area? Will the building that was destroyed, will that footprint result in another new building of some kind? And so after some discussion at Public Works, we felt that this really is going to require some discussion from the full board as far as a strategic vision of that location before we commit the expenditure of, of any dollars to that location. Some discussion as to the future of that site and, and what it means to the village as far as economic development activity really is necessary. So we're just bringing it here indicating that, we, we've talked about it, but it is more than just, should we install water lines? What's the future of that location?
I see addresses for buildings that are in there that use a Monroe Street address. Monroe Street, where does it terminate?
Monroe Street, right now it terminates at the north end of Shop Yards.
North end of the Shop Yards. Is that where the infrastructure is?
Well, that's where water and sewer lines are.
Yeah. Okay.
The, the issue, and Darrell summed it up, all the issues, but in a smaller nutshell is, we're going to be required to put in current engineering specs, sewer and water to buildings that are far from current standards. And at that point, we can put them in and, but it just, it'd be, if we, and I'm not sure where you go with this, but there will be a request for dollars sooner or later because we have substandard sewer and water down there. And Joe knows, as in Public Works, we have freeze-ups down there. We have a poor system as it is right now, let alone if you had to go to sprinklers and the, the upgrading.
Frozen sewer. The biggest reason this is coming up right now is from what they're being told is they don't have to build up to a forty thousand square foot building, the warehouse building to replace what we're putting down. And most likely, because of what they store in the building and the house, that they're most likely going to be required to sprinkle that building. And right now, both myself and Water Utility, we're not exactly sure we will be able to give them what they need to actually do the sprinkling of that building. Right now, we have not, no plans, but something to state or anything else on this building needs to be addressed. Feeling that we're getting on the property, looking out for the building. My conversation with the fire department, and also the water utility.
Something to think about. Kind of the end of it.
Anything else, Daryl? Joe, I was just one, you know, one tab away from you earlier tonight.
Well, you hurt my feelings.
Well, get over it.
You have feelings?
I'm over it.
Didn't take long. Public safety.
Okay, those committee members can read the minutes of our last meeting, and we are not meeting in June. Our next meeting is in July. But we did have one ordinance that we want to amend. It has to do with school bus warning lights, and Chief had a dialogue with a school bus operator, and it has to do with, I don't know, would you like to talk about it, or do you want me to just introduce it?
Feel free. Let's be here for questions.
Okay, thanks. Normally, school buses have red flashing lights when they stop. However, we have, you know, some, some people that are picked up who need special assistance, and sometimes it can take up to ten minutes for those people to, on the bus and situated and, and safety secured. And so the bus driver was saying, what would be nice in that kind of case is that they weren't, they did not have to put their red warning lights out and stop traffic for an extended period of time. It would be nicer if they could just use their hazard lights to alert people, because all of these people are coming in off the curb side. They're not crossing the street or anything like that. They're on the curb side, and so they're protected that way. But, so essentially, what we want to do in the motion is, is to change the language to ordinance ten, or ninety dash ten to read, and it's the last sentence in there, and you can see it on page four of four in the Safety Committee report. And I'll just read section ninety-ten. It says, "School bus warning lights. School bus operators shall use flashing red warning lights when in the corporate limits of the village while discharging or receiving pupils or authorized passengers. Except red warning lights shall not be required when discharging or receiving pupils at, or authorized passengers in the designated school bus loading zone at North Hudson Elementary School." And here's what we want to add, "Or when receiving or discharging passengers in need of extra assistance on the same side of the residential street as the bus." And that's, I don't know if that's enough dialogue so you know why we want the change, but that's essentially the motion that I want to bring forward so we can change section ninety-ten.
I'll second.
Does everybody get an idea of what we're after there? Discussion at the Safety Committee about it, and tried to step through, you know, what it all meant, and it seemed to make sense to us.
The question, I don't know, I have a couple of questions about it, because it's one of these things that makes sense. And I find it interesting, it was generated by the bus company, and is the school district or the school board, or I don't know, the administration, are they out of that loop? Are they involved at all with this, number one? Number two, what does the city of Hudson have, anything similar? Because they have some of the same situations that we would have here in the village.
Are they, isn't the city of Hudson not doing this as well?
I don't, I don't believe that the city of Hudson's been approached by the Safeway Bus Company to make any changes at this point. For the most part, it's a situational type of problem. For instance, one of the, one of the children that needs some extra assistance is located on Lemon Street in close proximity to the school, so at school time, we have a school bus parked with its red lights on for ten minutes while other parents and the motoring public are trying to get to that particular area. And basically, what Safeway is trying to do, and it does not involve the school district by any means, is just trying to say, "We do not want to violate your laws," and, or your ordinances, which say, "At any time that a school bus has stopped picking up a child, it must have its red warning lights on." They just wanted to say, "We have a few areas where we think this is more problematic. It actually creates more of a problem than it would solve for the safety of the students." And, and taking a look at all the ordinances that were in place, or the state statutes that were in place, and trying to balance them against each other, the village can make ordinances which are more restrictive than state laws, but we can't go less restrictive. Back in two thousand, the city and the village went together because I think there was an incident that occurred which they felt this was, and I kind of go back to the feel-good, to make people feel more safe, that they put into place kind of the blanket rule of, "Thou shalt not pick up a child without red flashing warning lights." We've now come, nine years later, to say, "There might be another exception," which does not, does not reduce the safety of it, but the functionality or the practical idea of using the red warning lights at all given times might not be the best way to, to look at this and to really help with safety. So it doesn't come from the school district. It comes from Safeway, and I don't know that they have a similar situation in the city of Hudson, so I don't believe that the city of Hudson's been approached. I talked to Chief Jensen about the fact that we were looking at making this change, and he basically said, "We haven't been approached," nor does he know of any similar situation.
You okay with this, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, we looked at it. I talked to Mark about it. I talked to the State DOT. It's up to you guys.
All bases are covered.
Thank you, Mark. Did you make that motion? Yes, I did. Can I think sound or second of it?
Colleen did.
Or Colleen did?
It was second down here someplace.
Colleen did.
Any questions from the board, any comments? Since it's an ordinance change. We're going to do a roll call. Mark, you okay with this?
Yes.
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 All right. Anything else, Joe?
Nope, thank you.
Mr. Public Welfare.
Thank you. Public Welfare met, and we covered a few items. I will start out by requesting the participation from the board to submit a request for proposal for the garbage and recycling service contract that will be expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and nine. Gloria and I have been working on putting verbiage together for this, and we've got it virtually just about hammered out, and it gives us ample time between now and December thirty-first to hopefully get some participants, participants to put together some bids. So if that is okay, I'd request RFP, I guess I call it, a request for proposal for the two thousand and ten garbage and recycling service contract.
I'll second. How long is our contract good for? Only two years or?
Last one was good for five years.
Five years?
Yeah, and what we have elected to do, and it's a great question, Joe, we're finding that due to fuel escalation costs, all this stuff, people are very, very uncomfortable with writing a five-year contract. So we actually put some specific verbiage in there that we're going to request an option for a five-year. If they can't do that, a three-year. And again, as we write this, that we're, that we're going to have the ability to not necessarily accept the lowest bid if it's not the most advantageous for the residents. Any other questions on it? Want to ask for a vote?
That sounds good to me. All in favor of the motion is stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay, anything else, Jim? Geez, is there anything else?
Yeah, well, hey, really quickly, it's nine-thirty, and I'm going to keep this short. But we did have some wonderful discussion and some public support for our urban archery program, and it was enlightening. And before I move further on with this, which will be sort of a delicate matter going forward, I would like to bring a couple of speakers in, if I can get this arranged for next month. Probably won't take more than ten or fifteen minutes, but some people that have implemented this program. I've spent countless hours with the DNR now, and the list of cities that have implemented this program with wonderful success is growing constantly. We had such support that even some of the residents came forward and said that, because we can't get grant money for this, for this year, they would raise the money to help out in addition to doing this for free. So with that, I guess I'm sort of asking the residents if anybody has any questions about this or concerns to watch for the postings for the next board meeting, and I would really like to bring in some people that can answer some questions, because I feel that from everything that I've compiled, managing these animals, deer, basically, is advantageous for every municipality, and having the ability to do so properly takes time, and so we want to get started on this.
Jim, were you suggesting, I don't know if I heard, you're trying to get people to come to board meetings with the speakers, and, or were you?
Yeah, basically, if anybody is concerned about it, no, not the committee residents.
Could you direct them to your committee, the Public Welfare Committee?
We, they already did that, and we had pretty much one-hundred percent support, so...
What I'm getting at, I thought I heard you say you're going to have speakers and then kind of an ongoing education process with this?
Ongoing might be a little strong. I think it's going to be one night, and, you know, we'll try to hit this all at the next board meeting, so I guess I'm sort of reaching out if anybody has any concerns. This would be a time to bring them up, because I obviously want everybody's feelings to be heard in it. The biggest concern I've got, Mark, with this whole thing is that in talking to Mark Richard and everybody, it's going to be a delicate matter going forward. We don't want anybody to think that we're trying to do something that isn't one-hundred percent good for the community, but the issues that people look at, like, how many deer vehicular accidents have there been? Who hits a deer and goes and calls the police department? You go home and you call your insurance company. So none of this stuff gets reported, so you don't always have the statistics to back up what's really happening. But there are a lot of unmanaged deer right now in the neighborhood, and as president of Public Welfare, I've had many people contacting me, asking me what we can do to, in an effort to correct.
What's the difference between a managed deer and an unmanaged deer? It seems to me that they're all unmanaged.
You don't name them?
And the majority of the deer in the village hang out in my backyard. I can't grow stuff as fast as, they eat it. No disrespect to your speakers, but I, I'm puzzled what they're going to do. Are they coming to convince us that we ought to move forward with the program?
It's going to be very brief, Daryl, and just basically, I'd like to have a couple of people here, namely, the people who would instruct the archers and do the testing so people know that the people that would be doing these, there's going to be no guns used, it's strictly archery, and these people are the best of the best. The second people is the DNR have some incredible programs that they can just hit on really quick, quickly. I don't think we really even need to go to this level, so if, if that's the kind, that's the kind of feeling that Sandra and Colleen and I got at the Public Welfare meeting, is like, what's the delay? Let's just move forward with it.
That's where I'm at. That's what I'm saying. What more do we need to do here?
But just before you start, I'm going to answer to that real quickly. The only reason I'm taking such care and caution in this is, I believe this was tried to get presented before, and after somebody or a group of people spent a lot of time, it got rejected or shot down, and I've already got an enormous amount of time into this with, with trying to sort of come up with a plan. I don't want to get halfway through it and have my efforts, you know, go, you know, down the drain. So I really want to make sure that everybody is for it, because many of us see deer all the time. Some people don't see any, and the thing that we're trying to get across is that you will always see deer. It's not going, we're never, ever going to take the deer out. There, there will always be deer, and right now with the economy, the fact that food shelves are looking for meat, the whole thing, it's just got a whole bunch of positives. So, yeah, thank you for your support.
The questions I had about it were, safety for one, the people doing it would be qualified, licensed, however, and then also the logistics of it, whether North Hudson has the spaces to be able to do this, or will it require going into yards? Will they do it in the park? Just questions like that. I think someone needs to answer questions like that.
On a previous, oh, this is several years ago when we did investigate this, I believe the estimated cost to the village would have been in excess of eight thousand dollars, and that's what stopped us short with that at that time.
For sharpshooters.
For sharpshooters.
That would have been a different scenario.
So I'm looking with great interest in what you have to present next month, and your presenters will probably get quite a few questions. Make sure that Gloria gets that on the agenda.
You bet. Absolutely. Done deal. Thank you. That's pretty much it. I just wanted to touch on one thing. Can I talk about anything we didn't talk about at the board meeting or not? This floodplain thing? I'm good. Life is good. It's nine, nine forty. Anything else can wait, I believe. Chair update? A real brief chair update. This doesn't affect a lot of people, but it's worth talking about since we've got a little TV time. There has been an issue that has arisen. FEMA shot some elevations of Lake Malaloo in two thousand and one at the high watermark of six ninety-two, and adapted a new high watermark that affects everybody who is within a predetermined distance from that high watermark back. The only problem that happened was they forgot to take into account topography, and many of the homes that are required now by FEMA's new rules to get insurance realistically are thirty feet above the, the high watermark, some of them closer, but it is something that may get brought up. I will work with Gloria so that if people have questions, she can maybe have the proper paperwork handy to sort of help them answer their questions. I don't think it's anything the village needs to be involved in at this time, other than if people call, let them know that I'm just behind the scenes, sort of gathering information to try to help out in any way that we can. But it is, it is interesting. Hold on one second. That's good enough. Thank you very much.
You sure?
No, but I'm close enough to share that.
Colleen, you're on.
Okay, I'll be quick. The Park Board is working on designing the park in the Derek Development, and we hope to get that done this summer. And I do have a few issue statements here. The first one being to replace the sign at Eagle Woods Park, and it would be similar to the one at Woodcrest. There is the color, or it will be in color, obviously, so I would move to approve the purchase and installation of sign from Levo Signs for Eagle Woods Park, not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Any question or comments on that sign? Spending issue? We'll start with you, Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
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 And the next one, the Park Board identified the installation of...
And the next one, um, the park board identified the installation of playground equipment as, for Jensen Memorial Park, as one of the goals in our five-year outdoor recreation and park plan. Uh, we looked at a few different options, and it was decided that, it should say, a two-seat swing set, um, would be the best option to, um, put in that park, just a small little swing set, um, so I moved to approve the purchase and installation of a green single-post, single-base swing set at Jensen Park at a cost not to exceed two thousand two hundred dollars. That includes the sand blanket.
Second.
Any questions? Twenty-two hundred dollars a swing set?
Well, this is the sand blanket.
Is it what?
The sand blanket is also included in that.
Did you include the sand blanket in your motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Any other questions from the board? Start with you this time, Mr. Z.
Yes.
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 And our last one, um, the Mutt Mitt's Dog Waste Dispensers and Bags have been successfully used in Eagle Woods Park, Ferry Landing Park, and Vennel's Oaks Park, um, and we'd like to see those in the other parks, um, to keep them cleaner, so we would like to purchase those for Mutt Mitt's Dog Waste Dispenser, Bag Dispenser Stations and Bags for Summers Landing Park, Pepperfest Park, Jensen Memorial Park, and Webster Park for an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Second.
How long would you expect the, uh, let's see, the bags to last that this, uh, you're gonna go, you're gonna, I mean, periodically-
Yeah, we've, this comes up when they, when they start to get low, um, Mark tells us, and we order some-
Can you reuse bags?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, they're gonna take them down to the laundromat.
There are some communities that you just take bags from wherever you get them, your plastic bags, and people put them in there themselves.
Oh, could do that, too.
Uh, my experience with that is, uh, some of the best bags are the little orange bags that the newspaper's coming.
That's true, too.
Actually, the garbage bag is the best place for a newspaper.
Ah, okay.
Sorry, John.
Jim, you wanna start this time?
Uh, yes, I'd like to vote in favor of the Mutt Mitt's.
Yes.
All right, Sam, all right. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Why not?
Why? Do you have anything else for us, Colleen?
No, I think, uh, to the president.
Gloria, why don't you, uh, I think you have a couple of things you wanna talk about, and then I-
You're under real pressure.
I'll update the team on my handout.
I just wanted to update the board regarding, um, uh, a cooperative health, um, membership that they're trying to pull together in western Wisconsin. Uh, several counties are getting together across the state and trying to, um, uh, do this cooperative in an effort to save money on healthcare and, and get a large pool, um, which would reduce the, the cost of, um, providing this healthcare. Um, I don't, we just changed health insurance programs and went to a high deductible, and basically, what we've already done is what they are doing. The only difference is that we, we did it on our own. I think that probably by next year, we would be ready to maybe put our hat in that and see what kind of bid we could get, um, because I have a feeling that, um, our health, um, cost for this year will be lower, and so then when we apply to this, if we apply to this, it, we'd have a chance of getting lower bids. But basically, what we've already done is what they've moved to with the high deductible HSAs. Um, the difference is, we don't supply or have in conjunction a wellness program that this, this would allow for.
So, are you saying that we might do this for our next budget year, two thousand and ten?
It's up to the board, whether they'd like to, um, have a quote to, to do this. It's kinda late-
Why wouldn't we wanna do it?
Well, you would. You'd always wanna go out, but you don't wanna be bouncing insurance companies every year either, 'cause it's not advantageous that way.
All depends, all depends on if they are, uh, you know, we're the customer, and we, you know, treating us right, so to speak.
Right.
You know, depends on, you know, if they jack up their insurance premiums, well, we could bounce again.
Yeah. Um, the other item is, uh, um, comprehensive plan for Washington County. They sent us a memorandum, and they're asking for, um, a community official to sign off saying that we have no comments, or ask, that we should ask for, uh, the information and look at their plan. So, I'm just letting, making you aware of it, and this'll probably be something that you, George, will be signing if you choose to or, or recommend to. The other item is, uh, add to the, for the people that attend Board of Review, we have a meeting on June seventeenth at four o'clock with anticipation, anticipation of, um, adjourning per, uh, for the year.
And that's at four p.m.?
Yes.
I'll have to add that to my calendar. Do we need to say anything about the Board of Review? We met last night.
It's up to you.
We met, Board of Review met last night. We were here for two hours. It was a lot of fun.
No one came in.
We had pizza.
None.
How come we can't have pizza tonight? We were here longer.
That's true.
Uh, we were here both nights, though, George.
Yeah. Uh, this is, uh, the update on our goals and objectives, and I'll just tell you what I've been doing with them. We, see, this school, take one past the restaurant. Um, changing the format a little bit, as you can see, um, what I, the reason that these are not included in your, the reason these, you got enough?
I think we have, yeah, you can have that one.
Yeah. The reason that these are not included in your board packet is, bye, John.
Bye.
I guess you didn't wanna hear about goals and objectives. Start again. The reason that these are not included in your board packet is because I use the board packet to update this list. What I do is I comb through your meeting minutes and, uh, look to see where are we? What have we accomplished? Um, by, it is my hope that by the end of the year, uh, there is so many on here that each group has their own page, but for now, as you see this, uh, I will update this. In fact, during the meeting tonight, um, I got quite a few, uh, updates under the completed section and under the progress section. I've also added, uh, that we are going to, uh, take a look at fuel ca, costs and perhaps piggyback with the county. I've added develop a retention, a, uh, I can't remount writing, a policy. No, which policy was that?
Retention policy.
Retention policy. I'll talk to you about that later, then, retention policy. And talk about the economic development, shopyards, and a strategic vision. So, uh, what I'm asking each of you to do as you look over these is to help me update them, tell me where you are with these things, because even though they may not be in your, the minutes of your meetings, uh, there may still be progress on, so send me an email, and hopefully, in the very near future, you'll be able to do it through the village's, uh, server and not your own. Anybody have any questions or comments? Part of the reason for this is, uh, I, as a member of this board over the past seven years, uh, you kinda lose track of what we as individuals and we as committees do in the course of even six months. What did we do this year? And maybe this is a way that we can look at and reflect upon our accomplishments, because all too often we wonder, did, what, did we do any good this year? And so we can look at this and say, "Wow, this committee did a lot." Okay? All right? Any questions or comments?
You're just trying to make your year-end letter easier to write.
With this, Joe, it may be a lot longer.
You can just pick out the big ones.
Under trustees, number two, that has been completed.
Yes, it has, and in fact, I even wrote the date here of six-one-zero-nine, because it was accomplished, and we learned about that last night, and the final one is done.
Are you giving this to, uh, all of the, uh, staff members, the senior staff members?
Yeah, only the senior ones.
I mean-
None of the junior ones.
You know what I mean.
Yes, I do. The police department, public works, and administrators.
Do you mean the agents?
I wouldn't take that.
All right. Number five is done. Yes, we did, and see, you have your resolution. Notice, as Gloria pointed out, trustees, item number five, discuss, adopt, sustainable community principle resolution. And you notice under progress, it's scheduled for tonight, now I can, now I can do the completed. No editorializing. Okay. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Good night, all, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, George.